Yeah.
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 All right. Good morning, everyone. It is nine a.m. Today is Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. We'll call the meeting of the county commissioners to order and we'll begin with pledge of allegiance and I'll have Steve lead us.
Well, I believe that it's specified under the United States of America, by the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Steve. If you do have a cellphone, please silence it so it does not disrupt the meeting here this morning, if you would. Calls for public comment. Public comment may be submitted in person or via telephone at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or on our other line at six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Moving on to item number three, does commissioners have any conflict of interest items?
No, no.
Okay, look for a motion to approve the March eighteenth agenda.
So moved.
Moved by McElhaney, second by Gable. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number five is action to approve the March eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Seconded.
Moved by Johnson, second by Schwer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Monthly reports. Highway Superintendent Randy Falvey was not able to attend the meeting this morning, so he did leave his report with me and I'll just kind of go over some highlights from the highway department for March of twenty twenty five. He advises that he has sent the guys out a few times to deal with snow. I'm guessing not very often, but he has had to send them out. Hauled sand from a local quarry along with the city of Watertown to replenish their sand and salt road mix that they applied to the roads for ice and snow. They put up load limits on the blacktop roads. Moisture is starting to come up through the cracks, which are quite large this year. Our roads are really taking a pounding this year. And with that being said, the 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 bridge limit up on Fourteenth Avenue is being highly enforced. The load limit up on Fourteenth Avenue, as you guys know, highway patrol has been up there working that pretty rigorously and I know that some citations have have come out of that, so please obey those load limits on our on our roads and on our bridges. It's important as we try and maintain their integrity throughout this spring. Says otherwise, a crew has been out crack sealing the roads, concentrating on County Road eleven dash one and eleven dash two. And the motor grader operators have been out working the gravel roads with sufficient moisture, he says. New employee Cody Hoff started with the highway department on March third, so they're glad to have him on board. And getting their recent new hires trained on the incident command system or ICS training, which is part of FEMA training, he says here in his report. So those are the highlights from the highway department. Does anybody have any questions? I'm sure I can answer them anyway, but we can sure find an answer for you if you do. Okay. All right. Let's move on to facility manager, Steve.
Morning.
All right, Steve. All right, Steve. I'll wait until this is on. Good morning. Okay. We'll start out with my report with the egg building. The electrical panel in the hallway leading to the cell ring has been replaced. When they opened it up in the back, it was pretty bad. There's a bunch of bum fuses, a bunch of stuff that was all actually magnetized to it and it was some stuff was really corroded in there bad. Wood chips in the in the has been removed in the barn from the farm show event. There's still some major winter events are coming to an end with the gun show this weekend and the Boys and Girls Club camel races in April. Government building staff are converting an old boil room into a maintenance mechanical room. The process and then I'm in the process of getting quotes for a grant to upgrade some cameras and adding some cameras to the courthouse here. And then just a side note on that, Brent will be putting that together next month. I gotta have them the quotes in by the end of this month so they can get, we can get that going. Park reservations as of March sixteenth, five hundred and fifty-two reservations were made online since the then since the opening. I kind of looked back and saw that and on the first day alone, there was ninety reservations that was made on the first first day. Also been getting some individuals interested in doing some maintenance out at the park this season instead of probably I might go that route. I've had it actually three of them or so that have approached me wanting to do some maintenance, some work out there for the summer months, so I might look into into getting these individuals for the summer and probably they won't have to advertise for hire. So. And weed, had the annual weed board meeting and towns and township was held on Thursday, March thirteenth at six P. M. At the extension building with thirty-five attending that event. So there is a matter of a few different speakers there and stuff, so I don't kind of help. Thank you, the ones that have that did attend that event that evening. Also, I attended a in the past couple of weeks neighboring counties weed meetings and then we'll attend a few more in the next couple of weeks and so we had that are of our neighboring counties and so we had. And then I will also be attending FSA meeting this morning. They're having their annual, I think it's their annual and monthly meeting and they asked me to come and present to them on the weed controls in the CRP acres, so. And then West Nile, with all the federal cuts this year, the West Nile grants might be limited or might not even be funded at all. A lot of that comes from the CDC and a lot of that is through the smoking deal and they've cut that budget, I think, like three or five million dollars from the federal standpoint, so those funds might be very limited, so. That's all I have for that, so. Any questions?
But do you have any questions? Nope. All right.
Okay, I don't know if you want to go down to my.
Sure. What do you got? Eleven. Let's move down to item number eleven, action to approve contract with South Dakota Department of Transportation for the twenty twenty-five weed spray.
Okay, this is every year annual deal and so we had with the it's an agreement between the state DOT and the county for doing their weed control and their in the rightaways. And I put in a bid proposal for thirty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars this year for doing the contracts for the for the state.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by McElhaney, second by Schwer. Any discussion on that?
So that's the map you have in the packet. That's that's.
That's yeah, the map in the packet right there. Yep, that's the roads that we have to maintain. It's about a hundred miles that we maintain for the state, so.
Okay. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move down to item number twelve, action to approve the twenty twenty-five rates for weed chemicals and hourly spraying rate.
Yeah, I don't have that right now sheet if we can pull that up. This is something that I come across do every year and so we had because of the different. I've got that. That's the other, but I do this every year because we of the charges of what we get for chemical charges. So it all reflects back to all the townships for for this is an approval to 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 accept these rates for this year.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Gable, second by McElhaney. Discussion. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much.
You bet.
All right, let's back up and let's go to item number seven. This is an action to authorize the chair to sign the bridge improvement grant agreement for Bridge ID number fifteen dash two four zero dash one five five.
So this is a grant that was applied for last year, which we have now been approved to receive. We just need to take action on that. This is the bridge that received that ice damage that needs to be repaired.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Johnson, second by McElhaney. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Number eight, discussion possible action to authorize the chair to sign a contract for engineering services with Banner Associates Incorporated per Bridge ID number fifteen dash two four zero dash one five five.
This is the same bridge that you just approved to allow Banner to do the engineering on this.
Make a motion to approve. Motion by Gable.
Seconded.
Second by Schwer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine is action to authorize the chair to sign a right away certificate for the Fourteenth Avenue Bridge project.
That also is in your packet. It's to keep that Fourteenth Avenue Bridge project moving along. You need to have the right away certificates approved by you and allow the chair to sign.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Johnson, second by McElhaney. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Keep it moving forward. All right, jumping down to item number thirteen. Discussion possible action to accept a quote for Cottonton County website redesign.
Well, we need to do the utilities one still. Sorry, Troy. Number ten. Number ten.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Let me back up. Number ten, action to authorize the chair to sign utility certificate for the Fourteenth Avenue Bridge project. Move by Johnson.
Seconded.
Second by Schwer. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right, now let's jump down to the number thirteen discussion possible action to accept a quote for Cottonton County website redesign. This, I guess, is, did I have this put on the agenda? I think I did.
Yeah, yeah, you asked to have it put on the next couple of weeks. If you don't want to discuss it today, we can push it off to another week.
We sure can. We can. We can talk about this a little bit, so. Our website is in need of some serious, some serious work. I went to the website recently and I've had others comment to me that that the design of the website is not really user friendly. It's not easy to navigate. And when I look at that, I just I think that we can do a better job of making sure that our information on there is updated for the public and it's easier for them to to go and get information such as on the jail project or or upcoming meetings or et cetera. So if you look at other county websites, you'll kind of get a good idea about some some more modern website. Some some websites are a little easier to navigate and a little more friendly when you go to them. So I did ask Karen, who is our website designer, Karen Glow Antigenti, she is with PPX, PPWix Website Services to give us a quote on what it would cost to update our website. And she has quoted us fifteen hundred dollars. She currently hosts our website. We pay her about thirty dollars a month to host our website and to update the information on it, but like I said, I think we're going to do a better job if we redesign our website, so I'd like to have some discussion on that and see what your thoughts are on it.
It seems like a, so what first question is what line, what budget would this come out of? This other commissioners budget, so it's not really a budgeted item, but it's not. And then so this will be, does she have any like specifications on how to redesign it or does she have some?
She has some ideas in talking with her. It's a it's a basically, it's a new theme build, so it would have a different appearance to it. A lot of the information would probably stay the same. We would, you know, we would have our department heads kind of maintain their own specific areas on the website, but it would be a different theme than what we're using right now. As I understand it, so.
Can we, is that is going to involve some discussion so we see what she comes up, you know, so we have like, oh, we don't.
Oh, sure. Yeah, sure, sure would. And that would be working with her to make sure that, you know, we have something that that we like before it goes live. So I think that social media and I think webpages are a good reflection of your county and if we're how, you know, if we have people that are looking at relocating or looking for information on how to reach our county offices and that sort of thing. I think a website is an important thing and it's a it's a good positive reflection on us as a county, I think, so.
I, I, yeah, Mr. Chair, I totally, I totally agree that that website probably does need a bit of work and and it and it, you know, being having user friendly is to find information. I mean, I it's a good transparency thing, just to make sure that we could talk about some of the specifications and the specific ideas before we go forward. Do you think we could put this off a week or two with that?
Sure, yeah, whatever you decide to do. I just wanted to get it on the agenda, so at least we had some discussion on it and.
I agree, it's a worthy cause.
I think it's important. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve by McElhaney. Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Schwer. All right.
Mr. Chair, just I was just suggesting we talk about it first before we approve it, just so we know a little bit more about what we're purchasing. I agree it needs to be done, but it could be nice to have a bit more, you know, a better, a clearer idea what what we have in mind here before we go forward.
Okay, I guess my understanding is she's going to work on it and we're going to be talking through the process and kind of a working process to get done.
Yeah, it's it'd be a website in development, basically a revisit of our existing website.
Mr. Chair.
Before it's posted, we would obviously approve.
And she's been taking care of it, so it's not like we're introducing a new person to it, so, yeah, and I agree with Commissioner Gable. People are doing way more things online than ever, from paying their taxes to getting information for projects, for applying for bridge grant, you know, all this stuff. So I just think it, if she's been doing it and she can have us, I mean, if we've been trusting her for a long time, we probably, I personally think we can trust her.
So she Karen's been very good about helping us with what the when we do have to change something or update information. She's been very responsive, very quick to take care of stuff, so.
Yeah, I don't I don't think.
There, so.
Yeah.
How do we maintain current information? You know, who, who, who puts it? Who who does the update the department heads and are they dependable to be able to do that and?
Commissioner Gable.
Yeah, I've had this for the CCGAC stuff, so I, so there's a way to do it yourself. I've got some logins, but the big the big thing is Karen's very good about updating. So we have, she's the main person that updates. So when I think you you talked to her a lot.
Point of contact. Yeah, yes.
And sometimes I'll get a, I'll get a request from the department head or something that I I can't do myself. I'll just ask Karen. She's very, very responsive. Usually within a couple of hours, it's all ready to go.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think the the issue is the dependability of updating the information. It's just making sure that we have a a current updated website that people can go to that is maintained, being maintained effectively, so.
Fairness to her, she did not. She's not the one that designed the current site. She's she took it over from a previous design that we had and she's been very good about updating.
Yep.
Ease of use is really important because I just this past week, they working with the South Dakota Investment Council and and then they give you a website and then you have to go enter your email, then enter a portal. Well, about the time they taught me to enter a portal, I go offside. That's my point. But, you know, sometimes it gets so complicated, you can't figure it out, you know. So ease of working these websites is so important and and they're really good. And we need to keep current so that it is easy to use.
Right. I agree. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. We'll be in contact with Karen to set everything, get that process started and then we'll kind of work through that as a as a group. All right, number fourteen, discussion possible action to enact a burn ban resolution. Emergency Management Director Andrew Delgado. Good morning.
Hi, Andrew.
Morning, Andrew.
Good morning. Morning. Well, I mean, I'm sure that a lot of you are probably aware that there's been, I mean, a little bit of an uptick in in fire departments responding to to different grass fires and and so forth, so. I guess it, we got it on the agenda to to make sure that we could discuss it and act promptly on it if if it needed to be. I guess at this point, I mean, we have a few. Well, we have a few chances of precipitation this upcoming week. Not that it's really going to to green up, you know, anything if it continues to freeze that night, but I guess just my recommendation is still to to hold off for a little bit longer. I recognize that there are going to be some windy days and people are going to, I mean, it's it's good to not burn on those days, obviously, but I guess my my recommendation and in talking with fire, the fire chiefs, the local fire chiefs, a lot of them are kind of on the fence, but I guess my recommendation would be to hold off right now.
By keeping on the agenda.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Good idea. Yep, thanks, Andrew.
All right, so we'll hold off on the burn ban, but we will leave it on the agenda. Have that discussion again next week if necessary. Item number fifteen, action to approve abatement applications. Brenda?
We have one abatement. It was for record number forty-eight fifty-three. The abatement amount is a hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-one cents. And the reason is that this property was purchased by a tax exempt entity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by McElhaney. Any further discussions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number sixteen, action to approve the claims for payments.
Yes, you have that in your packet. The total amount of claims was, is fifty-two.
Yeah, it should be yours on this side. Thought it was laying one. It's in there somewhere. You might have, it's down a little ways. It's after all that. Yeah, there's a lot. Says dispersed dispersedment check register is what it would say, Myron. You might have to go in your other pile there still underneath your agenda. Anyway, so the total amount of claims is two thousand one seventy-eight eighty-six, but the nine-one-one surcharge amount is in there, so that is just a pass through. So our actual amount of claims is fourteen thousand five twenty-one ninety-three and we'll take the nine-one-one surcharge one separately for the sake of Troy. But if anyone has any questions, Myron, do you want to look at this?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the nine-one-one.
Oh, we'll do claims.
Let's do claims first.
Yeah, we're doing claims.
Do claims first and then we'll do that, so. Okay, so a motion to approve the claims by Gable, second by McElhaney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries. Now we'll move on to the nine-one-one claim.
And that amount is thirty-seven thousand five sixty-five ninety-three.
For the record, I will recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, so who made the motions? We have three.
McElhaney made the motion, Gable seconded.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, we have one more claim that I'm doing separately. It is our renewal of our property insurance with EMC, also known as AccuSure. EMC is the underwriter on that. It did go up this year. The total amount of the claim is one hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Last year, the amount was one thirty-six, three twenty-three for a difference of twenty-seven thousand ninety-seven.
Wow.
It's all because of all the natural disasters and and then the reinsurance companies, that's the process and it's, you know, that they have to get to try to bid these insurance policies, so unfortunately, it's just the nature of the beast, I guess, but.
Motion to approve.
Also, I might mention, so some of this will come out of the commissioners, election fund, government buildings, county jail, county park, egg building, weed control, road and bridge, emergency management, and then also the buildings that we rent will come out of those perspective offices as well, just so you have a heads up. It will be, it would spread across all those different departments. Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by McElhaney. Do I have a second? Second by Gable. Any discussion?
They indicated it with a fourteen percent increase.
Yeah, somewhere, yeah, it's, yeah, after you took off some of those other.
We need to keep Myron happy and pay our bills, so let's let's get her done.
So, Mr. Chair, just a question for the other. So did you say some would come out of the jail project fund or?
No, just the jail because the building, so this is just our properties. So what comes, yeah, it's not anything to do with the jail project. It's just the detention center itself building. So each building, yeah, is paid.
Everybody pays a little share of it.
Yes, yes, that's what it is.
Right on, okay.
Has nothing to do with the new project.
All right, motion and a second. All in, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right, no more claims, Brenda?
No.
Let's move on to number seventeen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Do have one of those for the emergency management budget. We did receive money from the Homeland Security Grant in the amount of three thousand dollars that we would put back into their budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Gable. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eighteen is action to approve personnel changes.
We have two.
Those in there.
Yes, we have two of those. Uh, one is for Tristan Brad, which he started actually March eleventh. He's a part-time correctional officer, step one, twenty-five eighty an hour, a new hire. And then another new hire, Isaiah Decker. He will begin um, April first. Also a part-time correctional officer in the jail, step one, twenty-five eighty.
Move to approve. Second it.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Schwer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number thirteen, action to approve travel requests.
Yes, you have.
Several of those.
Several of those. We have one uh, for the community services to attend a meeting and you have all the other details on that one. Weed and pest, couple individuals attending a um, workshop. And then also for emergency management, a couple individuals um, attending the basic inland S A R course. Search and rescue.
Move by Gable, second by McElhaney. Any discussion?
One quick question.
Mm-hmm.
On the first one with Sarah.
Mm-hmm.
Who's put method of transportation as a vehicle? Is that like a county vehicle?
I think it's undetermined at this point, so if you would need to ask her that.
Sure, it will be a vehicle. I'm just kind of curious.
I, I suppose it depends on availability. I don't know. Cause I believe they have a vehicle now that the community service office has one, so.
Now Steve, I'm just curious about a mosquito workshop. What, what do you do at a mosquito workshop?
What they do is they'll turn around and help you with identifications and then they turn around and how to treat, proper creatures.
Okay. Okay.
I heard there's a lot of bugs going on with that.
I thought maybe they banded their legs, so if you.
I think a lot of times, if they, yeah, if you brought your sprayer excitement, they would help celebrate it. That's another one. Wouldn't wanna get too many things at one time.
All right, that's a good thing. Okay. Just always curious about that. Thank you. All right, uh, any more discussion? If not, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number twenty, public notices, a possible quorum of commissioners could be in attendance at. Does anybody have anything coming up this week?
Let's see. Well, I, there is one thing that on Friday, the twenty-first, uh, no, I'm sorry. It, I was gonna say, so we only call up, uh, that's our shut fire manual meeting, but that's on, that's, that's a week from today. Uh, that to the, I don't know if you're gonna tell them by Friday. So that'd be the only thing I have.
Anybody else have anything?
I might mention, next Monday night, there is that legislative wrap-up up at L A T C.
Yeah.
Through the chamber. Um, sign up if you would, so they have an idea of, for food, if you're interested in attending. It's free of charge.
Where do you sign up for that at?
Uh, chamber.
Okay.
Get ahold of them. Go on their website if you're a member or just give them a call.
Okay. Sounds good. Nothing else, let's move on to old business, number twenty-one. Anybody have any old business? Your old business. Right, any new business? No new business? Anything for the open, public comments? Nothing? Okay. Commissioner comments? Commissioners?
I, I do have one thing that I will mention. You know, we have equalization coming up. Now that's a couple of weeks away. But uh, uh, for some reason, it happened again this year, the uh, South Dakota Retirement System Board meeting that I attend is on the same day. So I just uh, talked with Shauna. I said that I would be here in the morning, you know, I, the, in the afternoon for the local concerns and I'll have to leave probably about uh, whatever, three o'clock or two o'clock. But you'll probably be done by then, so. But then I won't be able to attend the evening one. And she's been alerted, so they have to uh, have a full slate of people there from the city, so.
They'll, they'll fill it.
Same as last year. So, but it is covered.
Thank you for letting us know that. All right, and I do have a um, a need to go into executive session per S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two for the purposes of safety or disaster discussion. That would be subsection four of that statute, so. Looking for a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Schwer makes the motion, second by McElhaney. Any further discussion on that? If not, uh, well, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're in executive session. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Allison.
And we do not anticipate any action to follow.